This meeting of May 21st, 2018 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please. Mr. Barton?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sancy?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
All right.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits packages as presented.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits packages as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, that takes us into the strategic plan.
Thank you. So, tonight, at the end of the year, school year, sort of wrap up, we've got two things to take place. One is to give you the final report out on this year's priority initiatives, which I've handed around, and we'll go through briefly on PowerPoint, and then to present to you the draft or the proposed priority initiatives for the following school year, the 18-19 school year. So, we'll start with the current strategic plan update now. There are a couple of empty chairs there with the microphone, and so if we get into a technology, or a secondary, or an elementary, or a special education question, I would ask Mark, or David, or Colby, or whoever, to come to the chair. Make sure you put the microphone on, so that you will be captured on the tape. So, we will jump right in. And so, as you will note, as we go through this, the ones that were checkmarked prior to tonight, I will not go through, other than to simply say, those were checkmarks prior to tonight.
Sounds good. We can read.
Pardon?
I said, "We can read it being checked off."
I appreciate that.
It's called the highly advanced board.
We are, we are.
So, student achievement. Plan for update standards assessment content instruction, resources, and secondary business education, elementary math, gifted and talented. Through in-depth studies, that is green. We still have a little more work to do to give you a little bit of an update. In math study, there's a meeting in a couple of days, on the 24th, with the publishers of the new math series, and then we'll prepare and do a pilot next year for implementation the following year. So, rapidly coming to where we want to be on the math study, pilot, and then full implementation the following year. Business education, probably the area we've seen a significant amount of growth in, thanks to David and his team. Financial literacy is, as you know, with the incoming freshmen, on the docket for graduation requirement, so the next year's freshman will need to have financial literacy as a graduation requirement. They'll be able to take it prior to that, and students not graduating in that year, obviously, can too. A little fly in the ointment there, as the state came out and is requiring this as a graduation requirement also. We're kind of waiting to see what their timeline is. If theirs is sooner than ours, then we may have to back up and do that as well. We tend not to sort of change the rules of the game. Once a freshman starts, we don't usually add graduation requirements, it kind of throws them off of their path. So, that's why we're, next year's freshman, we bring them in as freshmen with the guidance counselors, everybody having in mind that that's a graduation. But if the state preemptes that and says they have to have it by the end of 1920, then we'll accelerate ours. Other...
I've got a question about financial literacy. When we made that as a requirement, did we make any adjustments in any other areas in the secondary curriculum, or was that just an add-on?
That was an add-on at that point. And when we get to the next years, we'll talk a little bit about looking at where we go. Other areas, new courses, there's a new coding course, which will be offered next year. Official name for that course, Intro to Computer Science, but it's a coding course. Computer Essentials, which is taking place of keyboard. Again, kids don't need necessarily to learn a keyboard, but what are all the functions? Marketing, and then a marketing internship, so working with NICC and some business folks to do a marketing class. So, it'd be one credit for the class, one credit for the internship. It's our first sort of step, no, our first significant step into the internship world. Again, you'll see that coming up for next year. And then there's an entrepreneurialship class as well. So, four new courses offered in the business education world through this study. And then next year, we'll continue to look at those courses and potentially add new courses. And then the gifted and talented is study is continuing to move into next year as well. So, that's why it's green and not a checkmark, because one's a pilot, one we've added four courses, and then the gifted and talented will continue next year as well. Launch... Oh, okay. Launch Anytime Anywhere Learning Initiative, so previously completed. Provides teachers with more diagnostic information to your system in pre-K 6, previously competed. Completed student achievement. Actively engage students in their own learning through implementation of new or enhanced experience-based instructional strategies, such as project-based learning. We're quickly coming to the conclusion that this is probably a goal that's going to be on our agenda forever, as we begin to always look at ways to engrain that further and further. So, to give you an idea, some of the things that are going on right now, at the ALC, they've done some growing and selling of microgreens, at the farmer's market, photography, working on trying to launch the Tiny House Project, but we're working on what that will look like for next year, or the summer, potentially. Lincoln worked with the Humane Society and local parks and neighborhood around the school to come up with some project-based learning impact, environmental impact of those types of activities. And these are just a kind of just a grasp of what's going on in Washington. Students in Language Arts are working on a written and illustrated children's book, and then share that with the students at Lincoln. The Moxie Squad, which many of you are familiar with, taught three lessons about negative, navigating differences and intercultural competency at Lincoln, to Lincoln students in the pre-K through 5th. So, again, you're seeing older students working and presenting to younger students. Kennedy students created a wall mural for Lead 21 unit, in which students researched plants, then created an informational panel for display. Hempstead students in 10th grade success program worked with the school garden during their food and nutrition unit. I know also one of their social studies classes did a color run this past weekend that they organized, and did all the communication with the city and other organizations as a fundraiser. Roosevelt students created a public service billboard through a unit about drug use, and it's currently running in local billboards. So, you'll see that it's not, it's many, many classroom-driven or grade-driven opportunities. So, continuing to down that path until we engrain that as a way of thinking for all of our students. All right. Maximize learning for students at all levels by enhancing and strengthening general education, special education, co-teaching. Four out of five secondary schools participated in the four-day training in July, to be trained as trainers for the rest of the staff. Friday mornings is, again, a vital time. So, as we do any type of train-the-trainer model, that Friday morning is, that's where that pays off, and they can come back and sort of be their local expert within their building. Elementary schools are all embracing co-teaching, some in whole class, some in subject area co-teaching, but that is a model that is proving effective, but as you might imagine, is also proving to be somewhat expensive. Student development. Explore and plan for updated instructional delivery model for students with behavior challenges. This is, so obviously, we're moving forward with the Alta Vista campus expansion, facilitating and design meets student needs, continuing program development as well. So, we have, I'm looking at Phil, where's Phil? We have hired somebody, Shirley, to be the leader at Lawther next year, basically an assistant principal there, who will then be part of the design of that building, and then will carry on the programming as it moves forward, under our control at the Alta Vista Center. All right. Research and explore the addition of transitional kindergarten program. Again, continuing to review data in this area and seeking info at the state level, there are some nuances to that, some of which some districts are choosing to not necessarily pay attention to, and we may find ourselves saying, "You know what, it's better sometimes to ask for forgiveness than permission," but about how the transitional kindergarten or pre-K, or in Cedar Rapids, they called it, what did they call it? AK, someone said alternate kindergarten. So, schools are doing that, it's still an area of high interest, we won't have it next year, but potentially the following year, as we move forward with that sort of research. Increase the number of students taking post-secondary coursework with specific emphasis on removing barriers for underrepresented populations. So, a lot of work going on there at the high school levels, and most of that is about inviting and connecting with kids individually. So, a couple of examples, Senior High hosted a breakfast recently, several weeks ago, where they invited all students who would be first-year AP students to attend. They also sought out students who hadn't registered for AP or were on the fence, and invited them to this breakfast. The teachers who teach AP gave a presentation, there was a panel of students who were seniors who had taken AP to talk about their experience in AP. They went through what are the resources that would be available to you. At Hempstead, they're doing a similar thing, but they didn't do it through a breakfast, but the tag teacher, the content leaders, the guidance counselors, teachers, again, working to identify students who either should be in AP but aren't, and having conversations with them one-on-one, and then showing them, helping them understand what resources would be available to them. If a student is particularly concerned about it, the fifth-period class in a high school is the lunch period, so that class is automatically about 20 minutes longer than your other classes. So, when I talked with Ms. Bysker today, she's really intentionally trying to hand-schedule kids into that longer section for their AP classes, if they're first IMAP teachers, so that they can get some help actually in that class, as opposed to in the before-after-school setting. So, it's about trying to be invitational, to search kids out, tap them on the shoulder, and say, "You know, you should try this, you've got what you..." And again, we're hoping that that builds some momentum. Through some scheduling too, maybe trying to pair up some students into the same classes, so that maybe they feel some connection a little earlier on, and have, you know, a better experience, because as we have better experiences, hopefully that will help. So, we will know, part of the reason that is green is because, again, that's going to be ongoing work, and part of it is we don't, won't know the data until the spring of who registered for and took the class. Support enhanced comprehensive cultural competency, that was previously checked. Develop a long-term sustainable after-school activities program for the middle school level. We are awaiting the results of our submitted 21st Century Grant, continue to look for partners. So, again, we're hoping that that grant comes through, and the timeline, we've been told on that grant, surely...
This week?
This week. So, we're hoping for good news this week. If that grant comes through, that'll take care of that need for probably three to five years, depending upon how the grant cycle is, otherwise we will continue to search for...
Can they be able to increase offerings then, if they get the grant?
Depending upon how it's funded, absolutely.
And that'll continue to be called LEAP?
Okay.
Yeah. We haven't talked about any name changes anyway, so I would assume that it would continue to be called LEAP. Community engagement. Pilot make modifications, elementary standards-based report card, we've reported about that, that is something that is gaining a lot of attention, as we travel different places in the state and explain how we've developed it. I know I said I wasn't going to talk about the ones that were previously completed, but this one I will, because it was done by teachers for teachers. It really is, a lot of people saying, "How'd you do this? How'd you do this?" And we did it through a vision and consistency of what that vision is, but most importantly, incorporating teachers in the decision-making process, and we really have developed a report card that is going to be impactful to parents, to students, but also to the teacher, to help keep them sort of on track for the needs of an individual student. Effectively communicate to the community, you know, we passed the Instructional Port Levy, conducted district-wide equity audit. This is another one of our... We've developed a new icon, which we'll talk about with our next priority initiatives, that it's supposed to, some things being green, it's green around with an arrow inside, that it's going to be one of those things where we're, we're not going to do it in one year and be done with it, it's going to be something we continue to focus our efforts on. We've sort of institutionalized, or nobody likes that word, but what, can't think of what the other word was, but operationalized, thank you, they like that very better. This is going to just be part of who we are. So, just to give you some idea of the work that's been done, you know, we've reported out about the book study that was done in the first semester with our administrators and our building leadership teams. Equity surveys have been completed at the secondary level and the elementary level staff, that's ongoing right now. Actually, the students are doing it this week at the secondary schools. Schools have a building plan that they have to turn into us, and one of the planks in that plan will have to do with equity. An equity committee was formed, Phil and May Henchner formed a committee, great group of community partners, and they're sort of getting their work, their legs on that work as they move forward, and we'll make some recommendations to this board through Ed Program Subcommittee, starting next year. And you'll see in our next rendition that there will be next steps in that plan, but that we're not likely to have until our achievement or opportunity gap, whatever you want to call that, is eliminated, that work will need to continue. Engage community partners to explore potential new delivery models, expand to reach a summer reading program for elementary students. I've talked before about the conversations that have gone on with community partners who have centers of influence in a variety of portions of the community, as well as working specifically with the Dream Center and St. Mark's. As of current count, we have 178 students registered for the district, 26 registered at the Dream Center, and nine at St. Mark's. So, those are very good numbers. I think the Dream Center previously was just a couple, because it didn't focus on that age group, and so, it was three, so we're seeing some growth.
And then how many?
26 at the Dream Center and nine at St. Mark's. Some of the St. Mark's students are also going to come, who spend time in the afternoon with our afternoon extended programming too. So, again, it's a great collaboration and collaborative effort as we move forward to figure out how we help students be more and more prepared for transitioning from learning to read to reading to learn, which is the importance of what happens at third, fourth grade level.
They'll be down at what school this?
At Prescott this year.
And so, one of our instructors will go to the Dream Center, and one will go to St. Mark's?
Well, we're working with the, no, the Dream Center, for the most part, is we're providing them with materials, with professional development. We have, I think this is an accurate statement, most of the folks who are teaching this portion at the Dream Center are our teachers, but they're not there under our banner, they're there under the Dream Center banner. So, Gabby Sullivan, for example, has been a long-term employee of ours, and also works there. So, what's going on? Any other questions? I know I'm going fast. Launch e-pack, e-backpack solutions, more effectively share community offerings to families and students. Policy was updated by the board, the system launched online today. So, you can see the power of these priority initiatives, because people know, "I got to report to the board." Sometimes we push the send button on the day of, and that's okay, because we just, having a deadline is an important thing. Sorry, Mike. We'll take submissions over the summer, continue to keep that active.
Really? That was a long time ago.
But that's the beauty of why we do this, it keeps us focused on that.
That's like me, procrastination, till I have to have it done.
Effective resource management, finalize design and construction of a new swimming pool. Eight years, or whatever it's been.
Six, six and a half.
Six and a half, okay.
Made it by a week, is right.
Made it by a week.
Yeah, we did.
Dash partnership is moving forward, I know Doug had sent an email, he just, he wants to keep you involved, and we'll get some of the X's and O's hammered out, that shouldn't be a big, it won't be a big issue for us.
Kudos to them for asking the question, so it's good to handle that stuff out, get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, that's right. And really, the way it's being designed is the Dash will be giving the proxy cards like we have, and that section of the building will be able to be sectioned off, and so when they're using it, they really, they don't need the custodian, they don't need all the things that they need today, when somebody's using it, they can sign in and sign out and have really free, if they want to swim at midnight to 1:00 a.m., and they've got the staffing to do it.
You bet.
Go for it. So, possible transition to district student information system, that was completed. Create a plan for electronic storage of district records. Three vendor presentations were held on May 7th and 8th, and there are down to finalists. Coordinating an in-depth platform and pricing review with the two finalists, along with evaluating the district's current ERP, systems, content management offering. Scope of the work, to digitize content into phrases beginning with accounts payable. Colby?
He can't make it any more layman.
English?
Just say it's done. Got a place for it?
Yeah. Sorry. I, you know, why is it all the time everyone can understand the ones that I wrote?
I didn't say anything, Colby.
I know, I know. Just to make a long story short, as Dan indicated, we are down to three vendors that we are looking at. We did have some presentations that took place earlier this month, and what we want to do is take a look at the, what the offerings would be as far as a pricing scope, what that would look like, and then make the determination to go out for RFP, because if it comes in too high on preliminary pricing, we certainly don't want to waste that time and effort of those individuals and us. But we are proceeding as planned to go ahead out with an RFP, and then looking at that next steps of digitizing content from microfiche, microfilm, and then getting that ingested into the system, also then starting with a lot of our paper records as well, too. So, yes, we're on track.
I don't think you have any questions.
I don't excuse myself.
Provide teacher leadership development for, provide leadership development for administrators to evaluate a training program previously completed. Provide teacher leaders with district, with leadership development in instructional coaching and mentoring. So, again, through the new teacher center, you're familiar with the work of that group, has worked with our instructional coaches, the secondary instructional coaches, district mentors, and our educational support team, which are our curriculum folks upstairs, and then we're planning for continuation of that for next year, to help our teacher leaders gain leadership skills, because they are often in a situation where it's a peer-to-peer, and so, they have to use leadership skills that you would use when you're talking peer-to-peer, and you're trying to create change through that process. Standardize and align district employee practices with the new requirements that I have a law regarding public employment. Again, you know Phil has been hard at work with that, with the work with the unions. Quite honestly, he kind of drug me along for the ride with the team award, but really it comes down a lot to this, is that we didn't just gut the contract, we kept putting the contract we could, what we put into a handbook, making sure our practices are standardized and understood and fair. And so, I think that's clearly a check, and I think that's, work has been recognized by Phil, by many of our employees. Implement staff recognition system to highlight exemplary work. Again, this is one that's going to be a spinning circle, because that's always going to be on our radar or our agenda, because that's, you know, part of creating an environment where we retain the best employees. So, again, some things you're aware of, the A-plus staff recognition forums, which are extremely popular, continue to produce the Up Close, videos featuring outstanding staff, again, popular, because they can, you know, they see themselves in that video, their students see themselves, families see that, it's just, it's just a nice pat on the back. Graduation, we've got a few things coming up there, we'll do the notes again, and graduation practice here, those with staff members. And then just always looking for ways to put faces and names out there with our great staff, because I think they appreciate that, and it gives a model to other staff members as well.
Remind me, do we measure that? I mean, do we measure how many pieces of recognition are originated?
We need to dig a little bit deeper now that we're through a full year, but we...
Create a baseline.
I broke the rule.
Yes, you did, you're wrong.
That was just a test.
We do, we do keep track of submissions that are coming in. We also, as we schedule out social media messages, pay attention to the traffic we get coming back in, and now that we get through a full cycle, we'll take a look at that and look at the ebb and flow over the year, as well as be able to take a look in buildings. So, we've left the recognition of individuals who get selected to the building level, because that's where it's the most impactful. So, those automatically get forwarded on to the administrator in the building. I know, like, when you go to Hempstead and you walk through the hallway in the display case, they have the certificates, they've made a certificate that they print out and recognize their staff members, and every building does kind of their own unique thing that is the most impactful to their staff. So, being able to look at just collecting some of that info, which we haven't done yet, but to look at what are the different ways, and then how can we share out those best practices to say, "Here's what we're seeing in one building, and it has great success, so can we offer that up as an idea for another building who might say, 'Oh, we didn't think about that,' but this would be a great opportunity for us to highlight that as well."
Yeah. I meant, if you're instituting a culture of recognition, I mean, that participation is usually a pretty key metric.
Absolutely.
To find out, you know, you can have a lot of, you can have a lot of pieces of recognition, they could come from a very small group, or you can have them from a very wide group.
Absolutely.
Those are two different cultures, but, you know, it's good that you're going to measure that.
So, now, I'm ready to answer questions about the current priority initiatives, to share our proposed priority initiatives that would begin July 1st for the 18-19 school year.
If I could just make a comment, to me, what this represents, the work you've just spoken to us, is a whole lot of people in a district.
Absolutely.
At every level, from every employee group, who work incredibly hard for kids, to do right things, and to give them the best shot we can possibly give them. And I don't think as a board, we can possibly say enough thanks to every single member of this organization who contributes in large and small ways to these things happening.
Thank you, Nancy, that is exactly correct. We instituted this process four years ago, when we did the first strategic plan, the very first time, I'll never forget when we reported out, it was not, it was just, we just didn't have priority initiatives, so it was really hard to get your arms around that. So, instituting these priority initiatives helps us, that's why I share it every fall at our kickoff, where we've been, where we're going, because it is important for bus drivers and paraprofessionals and food service workers and teachers and administrators to see the work that's before us, and how that's tied to the bigger picture. What their work is, how that's tied to the priority initiative, and how the priority initiative generates that five-year growth or change in the strategic plan. So, I agree that putting this out there, being very upfront about, this is what our focus is. As you know, not everything we do is a priority initiative, these are the things that we're highlighting, there are many, many other things that happen at the building level or in the classroom level. We'd love to splash up there, we would be here literally for three days, but we prioritize these priority initiatives, and there are many things that fit underneath each one, as you see as we report out.
I would add anecdotally, though, I mean, think back, for those that have been around four or five years, and you just think about the quality of our teachers, the quality of our leaders, and I think it speaks to how important that employee excellence part of our strategic plan is, because so much, so much of the rest of it can't be, can't be done unless we have the right players. You know, you often talk about, "We've got to up our game." I would tell you, when I look across the district and I see people advancing within our, within the organization to fill spots, as other people either retire or move on, that's a testament to what kind of the culture of excellence that you built in the people that are here. And I think that also can be a magnet to attract additional talent. So, I'm very pleased, and like Nancy, thankful that we've made that investment, and those people have taken advantage of that investment as well.
Absolutely. I think it's been, I think focusing initially on the strategic plan, and then figuring out, okay, we need to get a little bit deeper than that, and moving to the priority initiatives, and many of you were either on the board or on staff when we, as we made those decisions, and it's just been so, so, well, it's like a standards-based report card. We all know what the expectation is, and are we meeting it, or aren't we meeting it, and it's very easy to communicate with our, with our community, as you know, as well as with the board, and so really, it's getting down to, what's that right level of, how do we know we're making a difference? Because we don't want to go five years with a strategic plan to sort of scratch our head after five years and say, "Well, I wonder if that made a difference or not." So, this is, so I'll hand around the proposed priority initiatives.
I see how you fit it on one page.
So...
A little smaller font.
Yeah, it is a little bit smaller font. So, you might want to bring, I thought it was just me. So, what I do have, though, is if the font is too small on the thing here, you just, so, so I have my highlighter. I can highlight, and if you really, whoops, I gotta go back, we're sorry, hit the wrong button.
You magnify it, huh?
You magnify it, huh?
Let me know if anybody needs a little bit bigger. Isn't that a cool toy?
Who gave him that?
Yeah, they regret it ever since. So, we've got 18 proposed priority initiatives. I'd like to go through and explain, and certainly we'll answer questions around. We tried to keep the number in that ballpark, you know, 17, 18, 19. It seems to be a pretty good spot for us. I think this past year had, do you remember Mike? We were right at about 18. So, not that that's a magic number, it just seems to be where we- So, under student achievement, student development, there's a little bit longer list, but you'll remember, of course, that we combined those two goal areas. Under student achievement, student development, study current, you'll also notice that we numbered them this time so that it's easier to not, you know, number 12, number 15, it just helps communication-wise. Study current practices in the statewide voluntary free preschool program and create an action plan to begin in the 19, 20 school year. So, this speaks, Nancy, a little bit to, to the question I think you asked about the transitional kindergarten, and so this is, is part of that, where we're at, but we want to continue that conversation. But also, we want to make sure that all of the preschools understand best practice. As we do a time audit, we're finding some have a little bit more academic time than others, some incorporate just a variety of things, and so we want to make sure that all of the preschools, whether they're ours or community preschools, understand sort of best practice as we try to endeavor to prepare students to, to be ready for, for kindergarten when they roll through the door. Support schools in identifying individual school instructional focus areas. So that is, really comes out of our visit to Cedar Rapids, to help schools, particularly those that are interested, Cedar Rapids' model certainly showed that it was sort of a ground-up, the superintendent or the board didn't tap at a particular school and say, you're going to do this, or you're going to do that, but those schools were encouraged to think outside the box, be creative, and develop their own instructional design or focus areas, and then brought that sort of up the ladder to the board to say, and so some of those schools just do that as a traditional school, and a handful, I think three now have morphed into magnet schools, where they're, they take that model and with the remaining seats, so they serve the students in their boundary areas first, but if they have an extra 50 or 100 seats, as they did in some buildings, then they invite students from around the district to attend. It really comes down to, what I was impressed with was their focus, their collaboration around that focus, their students' understanding of that focus, and sort of gelled, gelled things together and helped them. I was really impressed with the, with all of them. I guess I shouldn't pick or choose, but the Leadership Academy piece was really interesting to me, I really, and they focus on traditional district curriculum, but they have some add-ons with, they utilize The Leader in Me, which is based on the seven habits of how successful people, kind of a thing, and so those young people really seem to be focused on what it was to be a leader. It was interesting to see them even sort of correcting each other, especially the fifth graders correcting the younger students if they didn't, weren't living up to expectation.
And it follows them through the whole school day.
It follows them through the, through the day, through, students have different jobs in a building, like many of ours do, but the way they get those jobs through the application process, it just was, it was very interesting.
And we, we mean by schools, and we mean all levels of our schools as well.
So, yeah, I mean, I think we're going to support those schools, you know, and we will see, not envisioning every school coming forward with this, and some of them already somewhat have it, and so as they sort of redefine that or solidify it, and I would expect that we may have some come forward and say, you know, we'd like to take this to the, to the next level. That's the way, that was the process that was followed by many of the schools we visited. They had this focus for a year or two or three, and then they said, let's take this to scale, let's make this a magnet, and so they approached the superintendent, district leadership, and then the board to say, would you support us as a magnet school? And we visited, had conversations around middle schools and elementary schools. But I think it's equally important at the high school level. It's about creating identity, creating a sense of, you know, pride in a particular, in that particular school. Revised district safety training to include clear and consistent reinforcement of reporting concerns, and so you will see a lot of work in the next, over the summer, around safety, and some of that I'm going to report here, and some of it aren't prior initiatives, but obviously we had a reminder again last Friday in Texas, we, when that happens, we often have an emergency meeting of our, sort of our safety team, which we did this morning, which involves a police, fire, other folks, just to figure out, okay, lessons learned, what can we do? But we always are trying to figure out what is the next step, but one of those steps is, how do we report something if we think we know something, or what should we report in helping parents understand that and students understand that? Because again, the best event is an event that doesn't happen, and so are we really clear, and do we have processes in place where a student, or a parent, or a community member, grandparent can feel confident in how they report something? Review state and district high school graduation requirements and develop an action plan for allowing greater student choice in their education. A lot of work in that statement, really looking very specifically about what is, what does it take to get to graduation, if you think about what our goals are in regards to internships and those types of things, and how do we gain credit for those types of things? So, that's going to, that's going to put us into a graduation review cycle. David Olson led one of those this year, as we looked at the, the financial literacy piece, but it called for greater questions, and so we're going to go back at it, probably a little bit larger, more systematic way to say, okay, what should we be requiring, and where do we give flexibility to students and give them a voice or a choice to create some, some passion behind some of those learning opportunities? Number five, enhance relationships with outside agencies focused on restorative strategies, mentoring, and tutoring. We've taken significant steps there already in the past couple of years with the Black Men's Coalition, with the Dream Center, with the, with the Y, and their work with, with restorative justice practice, basically. So, it's again, it's this strategic plan, through these, through the plan, but through these prior initiatives, you'll see a lot more intentional outreach to, to community organizations, to how do we, you know, how do we give our students the best opportunities for success? You heard me mention, so number six, you heard me mention earlier about some of the work that's going on around the AP courses, but now we need to get to systemization of that, recruitment of students into courses that provide college career experiences with specific emphasis on removing barriers for underrepresented populations. And again, that is, at our next ed programs meeting, which is, I believe, two weeks from tonight or tomorrow, we'll just go through that data about enrollment, everything from CTE, you know, how many, how many young women do we have in our CTE classes, that type of thing, because there are lots of different ways to read that statement, but we want to make sure all of our students feel like they have an opportunity, or an invitation, to experience the different aspects of the district. So, we'll put a lot of emphasis on how do we systematize that so that we don't miss that in the future, again, whether it be based on ethnicity, or gender, or economic status, or, you know, on and on and on. Number seven, research best practices and case studies across the country related to closing the achievement gap. And so this will be a pretty, again, a lot of work in that statement, but what is it that can be, what's been done successfully currently around the country to, to impact achievement gap or opportunity gap, if you want to call it that? And this can incorporate an awful lot of things, including start times, curriculum offerings, the magnet school concept, there's a lot of work there for us, because we talk a lot about the achievement gap, and certainly the goals reflect that, so we better get pretty serious about studying that work. And so to me, that's, first thing we need to do is define, we don't need to necessarily reinvent the wheel, what are other people doing that's being impactful and being successful? And then what will work in Dubuque, and then who do we get at the table to have that conversation? Because again, that very likely is going to be a conversation that transcends just the school district. It's going to incorporate families, community members, businesses, because it can be a whole lot of things, what best serves all of our students. Let's see. Number eight, make individual contact with middle school and ninth grade students who are not involved in activities. Again, we've, we've done surveying, we've done some things, but we just are going to put it on the table that, whether it's guidance counselors, students need facilitators, each building at the middle school will identify who hasn't participated. And the middle school, that's relatively easy, that's a relatively small percentage of our students who don't participate, but we want to make sure we're having a conversation and make sure they understand everything that's available. And the same thing with ninth grade. We know that beyond ninth grade, because it's important to create that immediate connection with the school in ninth grade, we know that by the time they're in 11th or 12th grade, those numbers are going to come down, students, you know, find jobs or opportunities that are important to them as well. But prior to that point, we'd like to have them build a connection with the, with the school district. We initially had put a, some GPA information in there, and we're back and forth about how that might impact things, and eventually we just said, you know what, it's not that many. We can, we can reach out to all those students and just say, do you know what we offer, and do you understand how you get involved, and what supports are in place? And we're not talking, we're talking everything from LEAP programs to music and government, to athletics, everything that we do, student government, and are there practices in place that eliminate students? You know, to be, to be a member of student government in the high school, I think you've got to have a 2.75 GPA. Well, that might be something we need to review, because I know leaders who don't have 2.75 GPAs, but what, what creates opportunity versus creating barriers? Number nine, community engagement. Develop a set of resources for parents, guardians, and community members regarding preschool and kindergarten school readiness. So, again, this goes back to what we talked about earlier, is how do we help our parents, our medical community, our service providers, our whoever interested neighbors, understand what, what is kindergarten readiness when we talk about it, and how do I get some resources? So do we develop some brochures, we develop some online situations where, you know, a parent or whoever can come in and then be linked directly to materials? But how do we take that on? We really have focused on kindergarten through 12 with a little bit of pre-K, but how do we, you know, use our expertise to communicate to the folks who are interested, okay, number one, how do we help create interest if they're not interested, but number two, once I'm interested, now, well, what do I do? Well, here's a spot, a simple click, or a simple brochure, or maybe some meetings, you know, a variety of different ways, how do we communicate about the importance of reading, or helping your student understand, or your young person, not even a student, yet, colors or shapes, or all those types of things, so that when they get to us, they're even more prepared for what we have to offer? Ten, again, a big, big step for us, define internship programs. What does that mean? Again, the vision isn't a take your son or daughter to work day, it's not necessarily a career expo, it's an internship. It's a situation where, for a defined period of time, you are in that internship, kind of like what were first steps in the, in the, in the marketing piece that I had mentioned earlier, but, and how can we create that as a, as a credit granting opportunity? And then begin to have that conversation with the, with the community employers, large and small, who might help us facilitate that? Because again, our goal is, in five years, that all of our students have a post-secondary experience, whether that be through an AP class, a PSEO class, or through an internship, and in the perfect world, maybe it's all of the above. But how do we help them understand what they might vision as their next step? You know, we'll have graduation here very shortly, and you watch those young people walk across the stage, and they're happy, and you just hope that they're all as happy the following week, when they've spent a week in the, in the world, and do they know where they're headed next? Further engage parents to student learning with the launch of CSO application in every elementary classroom. So, we are going to, you heard me say at the ed programs, that we were giving teachers a choice between the paid and unpaid version of CSO. The paid version is a lot more powerful. Through some good, skillful negotiations with Cindy, we were able to bring the price down that it'll be the same for us to give them all the paid version, as if we, when she polled them, who wanted free, who wanted the paid, we were able to get the price where we can offer them all the paid version, because there will be an intentional push to have them access that, and certainly the standards-based report card helps that use of the CSO, which is good for parents, good for students, and good for our teachers, so it helps invite parents into the classroom. Effective resource management. Add improved physical security measures. Ensure all classrooms have locking doors. Enhance camera systems and implement an in-building alert system. So those are the physical, you know, we always have to think about our perimeter, that's not the ultimate answer, but it is a step, it is. So making sure that in buildings like Hoover and Eisenhower that don't have doors, first they have a door, secondly, they have a door that locks, because there is still a lot of research out there about, you know, sheltering in place, if you will, that has not happened yet, and now I haven't heard from a situation in Texas where somebody who's in, in the school with that tent with a gun has never gone through a locked door. Once they're in the school, the door locks, they keep moving. So the more doors that we have that can lock, the safer, the safer we'll be. The enhanced camera systems is a small story, but try to do some collaboration with other entities as well about how camera systems might interact, and then implement an in-building alert system, so that if there is a situation, how do we alert everybody who's in that building as to what the situation is? And there's a lot of technology advances to that at the high school level. One of the things that Mike and Colby are looking at is, as we go to a one-to-one with our freshmen and extra freshmen and sophomores, there is a way that we can take over every screen to print out exactly what's happening and communicate with a large number of our students immediately about this is what's, you know, to give them that alert because it's about time, and giving them the opportunity to make the right choices. Maintain alignment with financial targets to ensure expenditures are maximized to support strategic goals. Maintain isn't a word I would choose as a goal, but in the current climate of funding of schools, maintain is, is a big word. And so our, you know our goals, with, you've seen the roller coaster of the unspent balance and some of those things, and we're getting very close to our goals. Again, our goal isn't to save, to put money into savings, it is to spend the right amount of money every year on kids, giving them the maximum opportunities, but also keeping up the safety net that if we have a situation, we can afford to overcome that. So Kevin always makes me put that goal in there, so. Implement year two of anytime, anywhere learning initiative to complete addition of 11th, and complete addition of 11th grade courses into the Canvas learning management system, because it always ticks up, right? The first, the year before, the implementation of the, of the devices is the implementation of the Canvas, so that when the device shows up, there's a, there's a process for the teachers and students to follow to use that device. So next year, our freshmen and our sophomores will have devices the following year, juniors, and the year after that will be seniors, and so we'll be at our full implementation at the second, at the high school level. Fifteen, construct the Alta Vista campus expansion with completion anticipating during the 19, 20 school year. Doesn't say the beginning of the 19, 20 school year, that would be our hope, but we'll have some work to do to make sure that that, so it'll be sometime during that timeframe that we will, surely, and folks are hard at work with that, and as I mentioned earlier, we'll have a, some other people on board to, to help with that work in the near, in the near Employee excellence, develop coaching skills of school-level teacher leaders to create differentiated professional learning that supports individual student learning. Okay? So that's a big mouthful. What are we doing? So we talked about what we have done with some of our teacher leaders this year, so how we take that to the next step to our content leaders, to those building-specific leaders, so that they can, on those Friday mornings, they have better skills, they have good skills now, but how do we continue to enhance those skills? Create differentiated professional learning. Those of you who've been teachers, or, you know, you understand, the worst thing you could do with professional development is put everybody in a one-size-fits-all box. It has to be based on the need, not only of the teacher, but more importantly, of the student that the teacher has. So how do we use the student data to help drive that differentiated professional development, and how do we help those buildings who control those Friday mornings have that in-house capability to create the differentiated learning for their staff? Believe me, they're doing a great job right now, but I think we can even take the next step, and how do we utilize student needs to drive that, not necessarily just interest level or, you know, big picture, but what do my students need this year from me to improve? So we're excited about that as well. Seventeen, update district administrative organizational chart to ensure alignment in support of the strategic plan. It's another potentially big step, but something that we- It's another potentially big step, but something that we have talked about with this group, with the exec team, with our administrators, to see, do we have all of the right positions? Do we have some positions that could be converted into other positions? Just, and I've mentioned this to you before, if you surveyed the other UENs, and obviously dollars are tight, but we have, I believe the number is six fewer folks on our central office team than our next closest UEN, and in some cases, we have less than half. And not that more is better. In some cases, it might simply be we're just not aligned the right way. But we want to be intentional about having that conversation over the next year in-house, but obviously with the board as well. If we're going to drive innovation and creativity and individualization of classrooms and of buildings, identities, do we have the people on board to oversee and make that happen? If we're going to look at large-scale internships, if we're going to look at those types of things, do we have what we need to truly make that happen and make it happen in a way that is powerful for students? So it's just time for us, we're very traditional in our model, and it's just time for us to review that. So everybody knows I was going to say that, so people aren't going, oh, he doesn't mean we're going to, no, that's not it at all. We're taking the resources we have and make sure that we are focused in the right areas for, to help our, support our buildings. And then we're also going to look at the School Administrators of Iowa for a new mentoring and coaching program. And so we've had seven of our administrators showing interested in that, so we're going to support their desire to do that and serve as a pilot to see if that's an impactful experience for them. That is as fast as I can talk through those. Certainly, at this point, would be open to questions. Do we have this part right here?
Not on this slide.
Okay. I was going to share with you on the slide that there is a, oh, you have it on your phone. So you'll notice the second one down where it says operational, where it's the green and it's the, because we really started to realize a lot of these things. When we put on a yearly priority initiative, we think, well, that's great, but that's not going away. So we want to indicate to you that that's going to move to a different list of things that we're going to prioritize. But that calls into then, as that list grows, how big's the plate? And so then what needs to come off of that as well? So we, you know, many of these things, as we get better at this, aren't one and done. You're not going to, we're not going to solve, we're not going to do it once and be, and fix it. We need to do it and then operationalize that process or, you know, because we did it for a reason. We want to continue that.
Well, there's a lot on that list that is, I mean, with the way you explained it from what it was saying, it's a big, it's a lot to have to cover, which I think is good, but at least it's broad enough that it's not going to narrow you down to a, you know, just like figuring out, getting individual schools to come up with their own identity and try to come up with something like that. And you got that from, you know, I know we've been working on it for a long time. We've been building up to that point. When we put the first strategic plan together, we always said, we want to think outside the box and for schools to be able to do. And I think that through the past five, you know, or so years, we've built that platform and to a point where now it can be implemented at a deeper level, that they know they should have the confidence in the board and the administration, that a building can come up with its own idea of how they want to be successful for their students. And you put that in here, and I think that's really great to see, and I just hope that the schools really embrace it and not just touch on it. You know, sometimes they're so afraid, they just kind of dabble in it, but truly dive down and touch on some like, whatever their idea is.
I'm trying to think what number that one.
I know, I was trying to too. I couldn't find it, but.
Number two, Bradley. So we tried to write that in a way that, I guess we chose to use the word support. So what is the work at the district level to make sure that, again, we don't want to take over that?
Right.
That's not what I've heard was successful, you know, or what I've seen be successful. It's when there's sort of joint ownership and they bring that forward, so.
I mean, a lot of it comes down to, it costs money to do some of these programs that they come up with. But that's not a end-all, be-all, no, we can't do it. It's like come up with the idea, and our job and your job is to say, how can we make that work instead of, oh, we can't support that because there's no funds for that type of a programming. It's a matter of what can we do as long as it's also supporting, you know, what we need to support, you know?
And I think what's good with that is not only is it focusing on the students and the teachers, but it's also talking about the community, right? What role does the community play is what really stands out to me. And I recognize this is all high-level things, but I'm curious, as I walk in the buildings, a lot of things that I hear from teachers is trauma, student trauma. So I'm just curious, where does that fall into the strategic plan with like research, best practice, on how do we support teachers who are dealing with more trauma?
So I think it falls in a variety of places, but I think where we talk a lot about trauma, so it's again, research, best practices, and case studies across the country related to closing the achievement gap. A lot of our students who have experienced trauma, struggled educationally. And so what is that? We've done a lot of work, and Shirley, if you want to come to the microphone, feel free, we'll put you on the spot, but we'll have a lot of work around trauma and trauma-informed care so that we are working with young people who have, for whatever reason. And that transcends, you know, all parts of the community or society, how are we helping those students overcome that? I was at, ought to have been two, three weeks ago on a Friday, when they were talking about the ACEs training that they had been through, which came from the weekend, the Saturday, the Friday, Saturday, professional development about how do they identify kids who have experienced trauma and assigns points to certain life events and then focusing on the kids with the higher scores. Shirley, is there anything you'd add to that?
Well, you talked about the conference Keystone held back in April, and it was based on the movie Paper Tigers, if any of you have seen it. And Jim Sporleeder, who was the principal of Walla Walla Washington High School and turned it around, was the person that conducted that two-day professional development. Many of our schools were there and are taking it back and really looking at the ACEs of students. Jefferson next year is really hoping to do a lot of trauma-informed care training with their teachers and really looking into the ACEs. Plus, next year, school counselors. I'm planning professional learning for them next year, and that is an area that we're going to dig into as well. How do we build resiliency into the students? How do the counselors support in whole-group counseling, small-group, and individual counseling traumas that students have had? So really, our whole system is looking at that.
And I would place that squarely under number seven, but also under, continue while I get used to these numbers, but number five as well, relationships with outside agencies, focused on restorative strategies and mentoring and tutoring, because there's work, a lot of work that we can tap into from outside groups as well. But that's definitely on our radar, and it fits under those two categories pretty specifically.
I'm particularly pleased with number four, their, the action plan for allowing greater student choice in their education. I think that it's kind of known around the country nowadays that not all of our students, our four-year college prep students, that we need to allow some flexibility in their curriculum and need them to touch in some areas at the high school level so that to find out a little bit about what their interests are. And that kind of, I think it kind of joins in with maybe number 10 there, research credit grant, granting opportunities.
Absolutely.
And so I'm pleased to see that we're moving in that direction. I know that doing curriculum changes or allowing that flexibility, it impacts a lot of things in schools, not only students, but also personnel. But again, we have to do what's best for our students.
That's correct. And I think there's more and more research out there that students, adults can find many and varied careers with, whether it be an apprenticeship, a two-year degree, a four-year degree, or, you know, a doctorate. There are just lots of different options, and we want to make all of our students aware of those. And I would agree, those two things, you could draw a direct line between those two, and it's what we're trying to do. I know staff sometimes gets nervous when we remove some requirements, but, you know, the concept is partially instead of students spending so much time doing this, looking for, some kids will have an opportunity to go deeper. And so that teacher who's now teaching maybe many, many sections of sort of a first-year class might now have time to teach some second and third-year classes, giving students that opportunity for that in-depth study and exploration, and then leading to an internship so that it's there, you know, again, it's not a base level. There are many things you can learn at a base level, but also something that's specific, has specific learning targets and goals for the students when they do that internship.
But it's encouraging students, okay, you've got your four-year, but it's to be trained to do something beyond high school. It's not just, you know, it's, we can't lose the fact that you still need to, we want to encourage, I would say, students to go on to some sort, whether it's a four-year degree, a two-year degree, some sort, you know, an apprenticeship that does something, you know, it is something, that there is something that is beyond high school that is within the workforce.
Absolutely. And I think that, I think this, well, we'll see what the study brings up.
Right, right.
That's the intent, to give them a little bit of a jump start so that when they do walk across that stage in a few weeks, they've got at least the beginnings of a plan of what comes, or understanding how the system works. Do I know how to get an apprenticeship? I don't know how to get an apprenticeship, but how do we help our students? How do we arm them with that information? Or what's available at a community college or a four-year college? Is it affordable? How do I, you know, what does the system, you know, how does the system support or not support me?
Financial literacy will help them figure that out.
Sure, absolutely.
It's affordable, you know, it all comes together.
That's right.
And we'd be utilizing some untapped reserves in our community. I know there's a lot of community support for our education, our educational program.
I'm counting on that, Jim. For several years of various committee meetings I've been, that people are wanting to know what they can do. Well, we're going to start asking.
Yeah, we will.
And we'll show you.
Yeah, we'll ask.
Be more specific in our, in our, in our ask and helping them understand how they can help us, and we can help them quite honestly.
I think it's good. Is number 18 meant to support what we're trying to do in number two and four?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. So we want to get the administrators, the tools.
Some of that happens in-house, but we also want them, you know, one thing that as a district, we do a great job of sort of growing our own, as we've mentioned, but we do need to get outside of our box once in a while. And so to have some administrators go there, one of the things the board has asked me to do is attend some national professional development. So I think we're going to, you'll see that kind of trickle-down to the building.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If we can get the top people, trickle it down to the next level and ultimately to the students.
Correct. Nancy?
I'm looking at just the transition from 17, 18 priority to initiatives to next years. And some of them, as you've noted, say incorporated into the 2018 to 23 strategic plan. Help me to understand where two of them transfer to.
Okay.
The first is the under-community engagement in the 17, 18 plan, conduct a district-wide equity audit. Where would that fit in in the new plan?
So I think five, six, and seven all speak to that. Seven probably, because seven is the most wide open. So we know what the data is with our students, with student achievement, with participation in a variety of classes. But five, six, and seven now are taking that data and doing something more specific with it. And so those, that will percolate through ed programs, but also through our equity committee, through D-SIL. So it's a variety of those things. But five, six, and seven, to me, have, why, probably, I mean, it's all important, but there's a big chunk of the heart of what we do in five, six, and seven. And so we've got the data, but now what? Now what are we going to do with that?
So nothing speaks directly to equity that I've missed? I mean, you're saying it's encompassed in the intention of five, six, and seven.
Absolutely. I think five, six, and seven are all tied directly to the, I don't know if I have that slide. You know, in the purple, the purple. I guess if I handed these out. Might have been easier if I gave you all the handouts. So when we were having conversation, Nancy, about five, six, and seven, we think that is in relationship to, five, six, sort of the number six, which was sort of the equity act. So really, it's focused on, you know, making sure that when we talk about restorative strategies, mentoring, tutoring, do we give all of our students caring adults in their world, that we provide a system, the restorative strategies is discipline-based, as you know, so are we utilizing discipline that is not strictly punitive, but is educational and gives students a way back? So I think there's, some of our data would indicate that we need to go down that path to look at our discipline data in a way that's impactful for all students. Certainly, systematizing the recruitment of students into courses. We know that our underrepresented groups tend to be based on gender, based on race, based on income. And so as we prioritize focusing to make sure that the students, it's based on their ability and desire and vision more so than their starting point. And then that seventh one, research, best practices, and case studies incorporates a whole, I mean, I couldn't even get my, you can't get your arms around all the things that could be a part of that study, but that'll be the first part is what is it that we want to, what are the big rocks first? What are people seeing big successes with and then focusing our efforts there?
I think another thing too, from the last meeting, David Olson mentioned that the new standard teacher is supposed to focus on curriculum, right? That he mentioned that and how making sure that's a representation of the students. I believe at our last education, David, yep.
Correct.
That's an equity.
I just don't want us to lose, and I don't think anybody intends to lose it. I want us to keep equity out there in front of us. And the notion we see in number six of removing barriers, in this case, for underrepresented populations relative to courses, I just hope we keep looking for barriers across from an equity point.
And I think that's number five and number seven.
Okay, great, great.
I think even more importantly, it's still right here in the action.
That's right.
And that's, I mean, that's the strategic plan, that's the governing document, the individual, you know, priority initiatives really are going to speak to what it is we're going to do in the next school year, but I think it's still clearly embedded in the strategic plan.
Absolutely. It is of utmost importance to us. If we're going to get the outcomes that we desire, we've got to get everybody as an equal participant in invitation in the system.
You bet.
I really liked the back page. Spells out our mission.
I apologize. I meant to hand those out at the beginning of the meeting.
I really liked this.
We'll do these a little bit nicer. This is just on regular paper, but as we finalize things.
I really liked this. It's like the roadmap of where we want our students to go.
Well, and if Tricia were here, she'd probably be walking out the door so we'd know, but you all know Tricia, and this is not developed by me. She did a great job.
My second transition question is on the 17, 18 plan, priority initiative, the fourth one down under student achievement, the active engagement of students in their own learning through implementation of newer enhanced experience-based instructional strategies such as project-based learning. I'm, again, I'm looking for it in the 18, 19 priority initiatives. It says it's incorporated in to the new strategic plan.
So.
Number two.
Yeah, and you know, that's something, Nancy, we could maybe spell out a little bit cleaner in here, but I, so again, we're, I think it's, I think it can be found in number two to some degree. I think it can be found, and I would relate to number seven again, that best practices, what is it that is good for all students? And that's certainly something that we're focused on as a positive for all of our students.
It's so broad.
That is so broad. That's the one that we really struggled with to say, that, I mean, because that is, that's big.
It is big. In and of itself, it's big.
Yep.
And so.
So as through the ed program subcommittee, we'll have a lot of discussions about where we're going to focus our efforts.
Good.
Yeah. Because it's everything from, like I mentioned, it could be start times. I don't know. It could be a whole lot of things that could be.
I was going to say, school start times kind of falls in number seven.
It sure could, yeah.
That's what I wrote down.
Best practices, yep.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, number 10, define internship programs, research credit getting up. So again, what is that at the secondary level? Because that is a hands-on experience. It's a, I would. It's out into the, into the community with the connection with the teacher, with the conversations about what have they learned during that internship program.
To me, project-based learning is a way of life. It's a way of teaching and learning that it isn't points of, we did this thing. It's, it's how we plan our lessons, you know, it's how we, we move forward with the process of teaching and learning. So we can certainly bring it through the ed programs committee. Don't want to lose that.
No, absolutely.
But we have to remember, our role as a board, you got to look at it differently from how you've always looked at it for the past 20 years, is not into that lower-level detail. As we look at the higher level of it and saying, what is the best practice? Maybe, maybe it's going to evolve differently because now that that's been coming through, they're realizing it's something more than just that, I don't know. Maybe it's not, maybe it is great, as it seems to be, that I agree, because I like project-based learning, but it's letting the staff now do that, which is what, what.
I just noted that it said it was carried over in the new plan, so I wasn't sure.
Right, right.
That I wasn't missing it somewhere.
No, I, yep.
Thanks. Right.
I think the one takeaway from here, and it was mentioned a little bit earlier before, but I think if you look at the transition from the old strategic plan to this one, I mean, and it starts with some of these priority initiatives, and even before you finished reading, you were like, that's a lot of stuff. It's really big. I think that has to be the message to the, to our staff, that has to be the message to our community, is that too often, when you've had the success, I think that we've had with the first strategic plan, it's easy to create a layup after that. And a lot of what we did initially was either gathering data, creating the foundation, investing in the people, to now really do the big stuff. That's why this feels big.
Absolutely.
And all you need to do is look at those goals and talk to anybody in the room to say, how easy is it to move graduation rates by 2%?
Yeah.
Huge. How hard is it to move those proficiency rates? This is big stuff, and it's going to take everything and more that we've, you know, that we thought of and haven't even thought of yet to make that happen. And I think that's, I know it's a lot, but now the, and we've decentralized this district in many respects, because we want to move to that, that way of life that Nancy talks about in terms of project-based learning that's really driven by the students in front of us, combined with the talent of the teacher that we put in place. And that's daunting, but should be incredibly exciting and invigorating for our staff, because the last thing they need is you or this group trying to tell them how to do it.
Absolutely. And it is, and there's a little bit of sort of trial and error there, a mindset, as you mentioned, Nancy. I won't give you the details, but, you know, we had a situation recently where I thought, wow, that was really a good, you know, it's a good next step for sort of project-based and student, and then David, who's immersed in that, said, you know, why were you talking instead of a kid? I thought, you know, you're right. So I think it is that mindset that we always have to be thinking about, is how do we let them? I was at, mentioned earlier, at the fundraiser, Hemsted did the color run on Saturday, and every part of it, you know, if they needed something from multicultural family center, a student went down and made that connection, or they did a panel discussion, students organized that and not, not the staff. So it is trial and error, because, you know, you want to, it's kind of like being a parent. You want to get in there and do it, and sometimes you have to let them stumble and trip a little bit and figure out their way forward.
It's good, good luck.
I apologize, I meant to hand out the strategic plan piece. We'll circle back around to that. Again, the interior, you've seen, the exterior, you have not, and again, I want to give Tricia Pitts and Mike, well, Tricia, a lot of kudos on the design, because I think she does a nice job of capturing what, what the internal message is from the, you know, each little icon on the thing has, has meaning, and the wanting to work in the mission and the vision and the values, and so nicely done.
I just want to add, I just smile every time we get to this point, every year, and every time we review it at a macro level like this. 17 years ago, I remember running for school board, part of my platform was that, hey, we really need a strategic plan. And it wasn't just me, there was a number of people who felt that way. I swear to God, those first couple strategic plans were no sooner done than they flew up to a three-ring binder heaven. And to get to this point where we truly are all saying yes, what the meat on the bone here is, is what we're really going to do, it just feels so good. It legitimizes what we do as a board to staff, it legitimizes what we do as a school district to the community, the citizens know where we want to go, and the whole thing just feels good to me. And it's, it is, it's not easy to be disciplined and to stick with the strategic planning process. There've been a lot of changes over the years, going back 17 years ago, when we gathered in this room with community leaders to help us with that first plan. We must add 30, 40 people here, Nancy, you were probably in the room that day, and it was, and to get from that point where we really were babes in the woods, to the point now where we're getting pretty darn sophisticated at this, it just is a credit to the district, credit to the leadership, credit to the board sticking with this, and I just, I feel so good about it. So thank you for your efforts and everybody's efforts on this.
Absolutely, and the staff is appreciative of the board's vision, focus, and push on this, because we, you know, again, I'll butcher the saying, but something, you know, if you don't have a plan where you're going anywhere, we'll do kind of a thing, and so we need to know where we're headed so that we know that that plan will get us where we're going. So a lot of heavy lifting to do, and that'll always be the case. You will never have me or any other superintendent or board sit here and say, yeah, all right, we're there, just keep doing what we're doing. There'll always be heavy lifting to do to get to the next stage, and that's, I guess, the exciting part about the work.
Well, thank you. Any other items? We are adjourned.